...was illiterate, she could not read, she could not write, she was taking the senior.
We call to order this regular March 16th meeting of the Robertson County Commission. I want to recognize Pastor Jeff Armstrong with the Long Hollow Baptist Church for the invocation, be followed by the pledge to the flag. If you all would please stand.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we say thank you this evening that we were able to gather here in this place, Lord, and I know that there are many folks in here, Lord, that represent many different people, Lord, and many decisions are going to be made here tonight, Lord, so we pray your blessing on this place. And Father, we ask that you help the folks that are involved making decisions and all the things that go into that, Lord, that you would give them wisdom, and, Lord, not so much that just decisions are made, but that our wise decisions are made tonight, Father, and that decisions are made for the future of this county, and it's such a great area, Lord, and you're bringing many people this way, so we know that there is future plans being made, there's a vision for what this county could be, so we ask for your wisdom, your blessing, and, Lord, above all, Lord, we ask that you would be in this room tonight, and as discussions are had and folks are making decisions, all that goes into it, that above all, Lord, I mean, you would be glorified by all that takes place in here, Lord, and we ask this in your heavenly name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, if you'll press yes and confirm, you will be registered into the voter system. There being nineteen commissioners present, Commissioners Brown, Ellis, Farmer, Hoover, and Jackson are showing as absent, I declare that we do have a quorum. You have in your packets and online the minutes from the February meeting. What's your pleasure? Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and second by Commissioner Baggett that they be received. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, so they are approved. Under communications, let me announce that there will be a special work session for the County Commission and the Board of Education in these chambers Tuesday, March 31st at 6:00 PM. You'll be receiving an email verification of that, but if you will, go ahead and put that on your calendars. Tuesday, March 31st at 6:00 PM, there will be a joint work session between the County Commission and the Board of Education, and the agenda on that will be coming out to you in a few days. Had the privilege today to observe, along with mayors throughout the United States, the Mayors for Meals Day and for Meals on Wheels, and this is a very worthy program. I think most of you know what Meals on Wheels do because they've been around for a long time. You may not know there's a waiting list in Robertson County. There are thirty-seven people who have applied for meals that cannot receive them until more money comes in. So they are having a pancake breakfast at Applebee's on March 28th from 7:00 to 9:00. Tickets are $5. Would love for you to come out and help move the ball forward for Meals on Wheels. For many people, this is not just the food, but also the human contact of this very worthwhile organization, so put that on your calendars for Saturday, March 28th at Applebee's from 7:00 to 9:00. And I'm going to ask our county agent, Mr. Paul Hart, if he will come forward along with his group. I think he's brought some other folks from the extension office down. Do you all come down? Pleasure to welcome Paul and Judy Kovacs and Kathy with us here this evening, and of course, they are very familiar to most everyone here, but this is the heart and core of the UT Extension Office across from the courthouse. They do so much for us, and by virtue of that, March is being recognized throughout the state as UT Extension Month throughout Tennessee, so Robertson County wanted to add ours to that as well. Whereas the University of Tennessee is Tennessee's land-grant university and has three-part mission, that is, teaching, research, and extension, and whereas Extension is in the outreach arm of the university and an integral part of the land-grant mission extending the knowledge and expertise of the university to the people of Tennessee through education delivered by grants, specialists, and volunteers in all ninety-five counties, and whereas Extension is a valuable resource for helping citizens to solve problems, providing real-life solutions in places they live, work, and play, and Extension's efforts are based on local needs, research, and commitment, whereas Extension's educational programs in 4H youth development, agriculture and natural resources, family and consumer science, and community economic development produce a substantial return to this state. And whereas using research, questionnaires, observations, and sales records, an economic impact was estimated to be almost $500 million from July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014 for statewide educational programs, and whereas a recent assessment indicates that for every $1 in public funds invested in Extension, it returns an estimated $8.13 to the people of Tennessee. So therefore, I, Howard Bradley, as mayor of Robertson County, do proclaim that March is UT Extension Month and encourage all citizens of Robertson County to participate in Extension's educational program and to learn how Extension benefits them during the 16th day of March 2015. Now, UT Extension does so much for us, and sometimes we'll probably take them for granted because they've always been there, but we, as an agricultural community and a suburban community, are deeply indebted to their work for us every day, so, Paul, to you and yours, thank you for what you do.
Thank you, students. You have a good morning. Thank you so much.
Next item, the chair has our reports, and the first one is from the Highway Department. That's 7.1. 7.2 from Animal Control. 7.3 is the trustees' report. 7.4 is from Solid Waste. 7.5 is from Veteran Service Officer. 7.6 is the County Industrial Board, or Economic Development Board, as it is now known. 7.7 is from the Planning Commission. 7.8 is from EMS. 7.9 is from EMA. 7.10 is the inmate expense report. 7.11 is from the Fire Committee. 7.12 is the county's financial report. And those are the reports that the chair has. What's your pleasure? Have a motion by Eden and a second by Gregory. They be accepted and ordered filed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, so they are approved. There are no elections and appointments for March, so I'm going to recognize now Mr. Doug Van, who's the Director of Planning, who will come with us before we have three rezoning resolutions. If you are here in the audience and wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to any of these resolutions, when they come before the body, you will have an opportunity to do so, and then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the body for their consideration. Mr. Van.
First resolution tonight is Mr. Michael Wilson. He's requesting 4.26 acres located on Jones Chapel Road be rezoned from AG2 to R80 in order to create a lot for a family member. Planning Commission has evaluated this request and by a vote of eight to zero, asks for your approval.
Anyone here to speak to that resolution? Mr. Van.
The next one is Mr. Steve Dixon. He's requesting that 24.20 acres located on Old Highway 431 be rezoned from AG2 to R40. It's located in the 16th Civil District, 10th Voting District. The Planning Commission has evaluated this and by a vote of eight to zero, has asked for your approval.
Anyone here to speak to that resolution? Mr. Van.
Over to the two residential. The next one is the...
The third resolution is Mr. Eric Sutphen. He's requesting 2.03 acres located on Keesburg Road be rezoned from AG2 to C1. This property is located in the 6th Civil District, 7th Voting District, and the Planning Commission evaluated this, and by a vote of eight to zero, asks for your approval.
Anyone here to speak to that resolution? Seeing none, the public hearing will close at this time, and we'll bring these three resolutions back to the body for your consideration. If you so choose, you may consider Resolutions A and B together. Resolution C will require a separate resolution because it is going from residential to general commercial. Is there a motion?
I approve A and B.
Have a motion to approve A and B by Commissioner Baggett, and I need a second. If someone will second on their device. Second by Commissioner Kouts. Are we ready to vote?
Question.
If you're in favor of approving Resolutions A and B, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There being nineteen votes in favor and none opposed, and five absent, I declare that resolution approved. Now, Chair will entertain a motion to approve Resolution C. Have a motion by Commissioner Vogel, and I need a second on your device. Second by Commissioner Moore. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's being called for. If you're in favor of approving Resolution C, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. Being nineteen votes in favor and none opposed, and five absent, I declare that resolution approved. Thank you, Mr. Van.
One other thing, Mayor Bradley. The handout that Mr. Hoag has presented to you tonight, reading material for coming to you next month, this in effect will eliminate the sprinkler requirement in our zoning, and I think it adjusts some parking lot density requirements and spacing and things like that, but that's, in essence, what it does. The committee had met, and it asked that we work on something to eliminate the sprinklers, and that's what this has done.
So you have that, and you will consider it on April 20. Thank you, Mr. Van. Under new resolutions, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Lanny Adcock, who is Chairman of the Budget Committee for a budget amendment for the Finance Department. Commissioner Adcock.
Yes, Mayor Bradley, Madam Clerk, fellow commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, this is Resolution Number Seventeen. This came up last month, and I asked the Finance Director if she would put together a package here that everybody has got a copy of, of their duties, and why that she needs that other person. Some of us, that's on the Budget Committee, understand that we've added a lot of employees in different areas of the county. The Affordable Care Act has put quite a bit of load on them. I just wanted everybody to have a better understanding of why we asked for that person, and I make a motion we approve.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Kouts. Floor is now open for discussion. Mr. Doris.
What are you going to take to having stuff come at the month that the regular annual budget instead of coming in the middle of something like this?
Well, of course...
What's a couple of months going to hurt? I mean...
Well, I mean, we can, you can bring it back at that time. What they're running into in that department is comp time and overtime pay. They've tried to do the comp time and not be out there overtime paying. They're all at the point that we'll be starting to pay overtime pay pretty quick, and probably should have already done that, but...
Have we lost people in that department? Have we lost some people in that department?
No, they've just had a lot more workload added. We had some people to leave and some people replace them, you know, but they have the same number of employees that we had five, six years ago, or maybe longer than that, and they've taken on all the workload of the Affordable Care Act. The Sheriff Department has put on employees. We've taken on 911 accounting. There's just been a lot of stuff added to that department. Yeah, they deal with all the retirement and school system and...
Insurance.
Insurance, yes. All the insurance goes through their office.
No way you have money from the school system, no?
I've asked.
Mr. Stubblefield.
I just want to say that I understand that High Points Insurance is the company that we've worked with, works and handles with in order to keep us, help us keep in compliance. They do software. I talked to Mr. Dozier there a couple of days ago, and he did verify that this new system that's coming in, the new federal laws have come through, is we're going to acquire a lot more. He did verify that, and we do need three people to do that. I have a couple of issues. I have a couple of issues with the money coming from the refunds, when that's not a surplus fund, that's to go back and pay debt, go back and do true fund to pay debt. But from this memo that Finance Director Stewart gave us, when she's listing all the things that have happened just in this past year that cost some more work, some of it being monthly, some of it being annual, we're talking about the school retirees, we're talking about the new hires. In October, they had to go in and do a school system medical insurance changes. In November, they did medical deductions. It's an annual requirement. Finance Department, and in December, working on school for the medical, dental, and vision deductions. They, in March of 2015, they're making their changes, and some of these will have been passed along from the federal government, from the local government, you know, to the local governments from us. Biggest part, and from what Mr. Dozier said from High Points, is that we are one of the largest counties, employee-wise, that are participating in with them, and that, he said, the major majority of all the work is school. It's not county employees, it's school, according to Mr. Dozier from High Points. I would like to make a motion that we table this motion, and we look at investigating the school board taking on this responsibility, since it's the biggest majority of this school board, even if it means them hiring another employee. I still think that it belongs to the, maybe you say it's 61, 6 and 1/2 dozen, I don't know, but if our Finance Department is already overloaded, yeah, and this is mostly school board, why not let the school board handle it?
Well, if I could answer, I don't know that I could answer that completely, but even if the school board was paying that person, they'd still need to work through the Finance Department, because that's where it's all handled.
I understand that, but they would be doing most of the pushing all buttons and entering the key and the information in the school board, other than I don't do the finance.
Well, I've asked on numerous occasions if they could help us or give us another person, or even pay half of it, or, and I've got the same answer every time, you know, they don't have any funds either. They're...
Where's next year's funds coming from? I mean, you know, we're talking about, she's talking about hiring in someone at $22 or $22.50 an hour. We're looking at $40,000, $43,000, $45,000 a year.
Well, all employee pay comes out of, I mean, it's general fund. It would come out of general fund. It would reduce your general fund balance by whatever that amount is for that employee. Same thing for the Sheriff's Department or anybody else that hires anybody.
Is there any reason why she's not hiring them in at the base pay, the beginning pay? She's not hiring in a new person, why she's not bringing them in at the base pay rather than the $22, $22.50?
Well, she's, what I was told is it would need an experienced person. It would be like you hiring a clerk at the bank to cash checks, or someone to do a loan officer. It's a different scale of work.
So is she looking for someone that's already doing the Affordable Care Act, so when they walk in, they can just start working immediately? Is she going to have to, you know, I mean...
We have a person that's doing the insurance part of the program, and if you want her to come up and explain what this person will be doing, I'll be glad, like her memory.
She did. There's not been a second received. There's a motion made and seconded, so that cuts off debate. Chair will make one observation before you vote. The compliance of the Affordable Care Act is something that we absolutely have to get right, and that requires a person with accounting skills to guarantee that. You can hire the guy who mows your lawn to take out your appendix, but I wouldn't advise it.
So is this person that's going to be hired to do this, is she going to have, she or he, going to have accounting degree?
Yes.
Okay, because not everyone in the accounting department, even though they might all have degrees, don't have accounting degrees.
Motion has been made and seconded. Motion to table cuts off debate. If you're in favor of the motion to table, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed to the motion to table, vote no and confirm at this time. There being ten votes in favor, ten votes opposed, and four absent, I declare that motion is failed, so the original motion is back on the floor. Commissioner?
You know, the Affordable Healthcare Act didn't just affect this county. It affected every employer, and I just kind of ask around people that I know that have businesses, ask a few municipal governments, just very informally, how did y'all handle this? And I didn't hear one person say they hired an extra employee, not one. And I know that, I don't know the statistics on every county, but I think, I believe Sumner County has five people that work in their Finance Department. Now, we have seven. What are they doing to handle theirs, and they're not hiring anybody?
Commissioner, they have a dual system. The schools are separate.
Dual system's separate.
Schools are separate.
Well, then maybe we should go back to Commissioner Stubblefield's proposal, that we do it separately.
I don't know the answer to that. All I can tell you is that I know that the department needs help. They're working extra hours. Some of the employees have taken work home, and like I said, they're maxed out with their comp time, and we're fixing to start paying them overtime. We'll spend, in my estimate, that much, this $14,000, the rest of this year, if it continues on like it's going now.
Commissioner Bowens.
Suppose they start making errors. They start making errors, and then you've got to pay a fine. Had we rather paid a fine, $15,000 or paid fines, I just want to pose a question to the commissions. Do you make a mind on that?
We have to be in compliance with the IRS. If it means that these employees have to work extra hours to accomplish that, then that's what will have to happen.
Commissioner Stacy Moore.
I'd like to make Jeremy a member of this body.
Have a motion? There's a motion on the floor, is your second. And the second by Commissioner Roberts, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, so Ms. Stewart, if you will come forth, you are now a member of this body. Ms. Jody Stewart, Director of Finance.
Ma'am, the questions. If y'all really would like to know more about the exact details of the Affordable Care Act, I requested Wes Dozier from Five Points to be here. He's actually a much more of authority on the subject than I am. I just know my department is covered up, so...
Questions? Does someone have a question?
Yes, he's here in the back, Wes Dozier.
How are you?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dozier, motion to make Mr. Dozier a member of this body. Motion by Moore, and second by Commissioner Adcock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, so, Mr. Wes Dozier, you are now a member of this body. Questions for Mr. Dozier or Ms. Stewart? Commissioner Moore.
Let's talk about process. Software is installed, everything included in, all these employees, all retirees, everybody that's enrolled in the Affordable Healthcare Act, so everything's computer technology direct, all these reports, what's the manual process? Are we doing any manual?
Absolutely. Just like any software platform or technology platform, think of your payroll systems or anything like that, you've got a platform that have the rules built out into that system. The system, you know, based on those rules, you know, gives you the output, but it's also junk in, junk out. So the system needs to have good information, the quality of the information needing to go into the system needs to be top-notch. The setup of the system and keeping it up to date with all the rules has to be kept up as well. So trying to do this all yourself, just on a spreadsheet, it would be a massive task to undertake. Doing it with technology definitely makes it easier. It increases your accuracy, but it still does have to be managed, just like a payroll system to pay people properly has to be managed. The software still has to be set up properly and managed properly.
So is the software separate from the HR system? Do you have a graphics current employee, give us this, the HR system?
The platform is both, an HRIS, which is Human Resource Information System, that also includes the healthcare reform compliance apps, as well as time and attendance, lots of other pieces. So some of those apps would be considered HR apps specifically, whereas others would be specific to IRS reporting, tracking, and healthcare reform compliance. But they're all a part of one integrated suite that pulls, you know, from the database, populates IRS forms, different things like that.
Do we upload to IRS?
This is the first year that the IRS reporting is required. Last year, it was suggested that you practice. I don't know a single employer who practiced. Your reporting actually started two months ago, so I heard somebody ask the question of, you know, do we have to do this right now? Do we need to do it now? There will be an influx of people who, other county government, school systems, who are not as far along as you guys are. Just the fact that you're talking about it right now, you're doing okay as far as where you're at, but it's still going to take quite a bit of work to get that information into the system and produce your reporting, so the fact that it started two months ago, if we wait until the end to start doing all this, then we run the risk of inaccurate information, and the penalties can add up pretty quickly if we're not reporting correctly and reporting properly.
So it's reported once a year, at the end of the year?
It follows the tax filing, so there's different reports that have to be given out. Again, that responsibility falls on the Finance Office. There's a new form, the Employee Written Statement, that's like a W-2, that now has to go out with W-2s to every single employee, and the information, if you look in the packet, or you can look it up on IRS.gov, the amount of information that has to be gathered now, as opposed to what had to be gathered before, is tremendous. It's every single full-time employee for every single month, where they covered, you know, where they offer coverage, where their family members covered, and it's for each full-time employee for every single month. And that's a Finance Department function, not a school district function. The school district just happens to have a lot of employees, which increases the Finance Department's responsibilities.
So is this tied into the benefit of the online enrollment?
The online enrollment, are you talking about the school's health insurance? Okay, the online enrollment, the responsibility of the enrollment falls on the Finance Department as well, because they have the benefits under their umbrella, but the actual online enrollment for anybody across the state, school or government that's a part of the state health plan, is done through the Edison Platform. That is the state platform, and they require that you make all changes, adds, deletes, everything on that platform. everything on that platform.
So there's no other place or anything that goes that?
We've tried. You know, we are, we have our own platform. We don't buy a third-party system and resell it, so we have our own developers. We do our custom development. We've tried to connect with the state on different things before, but as you can imagine, if everybody, not everybody, but most of the people in the state are using them, they tend to just shut outside vendors down from doing any kind of automation, because they have too many requests from too many companies to build in that automation.
So what I'm hearing is the database, the demographics per employee needs to be kept up for every time they move, every time they have a phone number, and that's what the finance department requires. I appreciate that.
Yeah, the, the system, my benefits channel system, employers over 250 are required to file electronically. So when we're talking about doing IRS filing, if the information in the system is not accurate, then that means what we send to the IRS is inaccurate, which has a direct effect on the employees themselves when they get the employee-written statement. So it's quite a bit that we need to make sure that we've got absolutely correct, to your point.
Commissioner Dugger, to your left, Wes.
Yes.
After the initial, and as is a change on any computer system, initially getting everything in is a headache. But once you get all of the data in, how many hours per week will it take one person to keep this county in? Just on this?
The Affordable Care Act and even the technology piece of this, this is all brand-new. So specifically being able to answer how many hours per week, I don't have that down to a science yet, because variable hour employee tracking is new, distribution of the required notices is new, IRS reporting is new. This is the first go-round that anybody has had at it. So specifically being scientific of how many hours it will take each week, and based on group size, I can't definitively answer that question.
Other questions, Mr. Dozier. Commissioner, Commissioner Moore.
I have a question, Ms. Stewart.
Ms. Stewart.
So we're almost running into overtime, because we've already started our reporting two months ago.
No, ma'am, we already are into overtime.
You're already into overtime.
Yes, we're already into overtime.
So is how much overtime is included in this tax?
Uh, no, I didn't put the overtime on there. I didn't know that that was needed. I think that's about $3,000 in our budget, and I think after the permanent payroll, it's probably above that. But we're not gonna go over line 62 on our payroll line item, because I have employee change, so I'll make sure that we do not go over the budgeted salary.
And I'd like to make a clarification on the reporting started two months ago. The reports are turned in once per year. So the filing for 2015 actually happens in 2016, but as far as collecting the data, that started January 1. So it's something that needs to be kept every single month. I didn't want anybody to take that the wrong way. As it started two months ago, it technically started, you needed to start collecting it two months ago. It actually gets reported in 2016 for 2015.
Mr. Moore.
But I want my motion to run on the overtime between now and the budget. Let's see how much overtime we need, because they're gonna be doing this course, you keep it up in the front stage, and it's really too long for me to record.
We currently have a motion on the floor, Commissioner. The original motion.
Let's talk about your budget.
I'd like to offer an invitation to anybody here, any of the commissioners here. We do live workshops, it's part of our consulting package. We do that for our clients. We do a lot of one-on-one consulting as well. The IRS reporting just by itself is so complex. We are doing four-hour workshops at the Tennessee School Board Association, the TSBA building, here in Nashville on April the 15th. So if anybody would like to come, one of those, there's no cost for it. If you really wanna learn and know what the finance department is having to deal with on IRS reporting, it's an open invitation. Anybody who wants me to send them the link, we'd love to have you at the, at the workshop.
Other questions for Ms. Stewart or Mr. Dozier?
I got a question.
Commissioner Couch.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes. The original motion, Commissioner Couch.
If we should, if I hired this person, and at the end of, when we get back to budget, if it looks like we could make some agreement at budget time, we could do that. Because we're not locking ourselves in for our goal here, we're just saying we're gonna get you some help until budget time. Am I, I mean, is that possible, or am I asking?
Well, this resolution is through June 30.
Right. I was gonna say, this resolution covers through June, through the end of the budget.
That new employee would be in next year's budget.
I don't have that in.
That's true.
That employee would be in next year's budget.
What's right, I'm asking a question.
No, we've got the original motion.
I think you said anything more, I didn't, I didn't motion.
No, but we still have a motion.
We can't, we can't.
Other questions? Commissioner Hogan.
If we're gonna go into what Commissioner Moore said about looking at overtime pay and overtime structure itself, I'm under the impression that Ms. Stewart here is working a lot of hours on Friday nights and Saturdays and whenever she come in, and trying to make up some time. Now, if we're gonna get a fair assessment of this, Ms. Stewart, I would like you to be a part of that overtime and look at that structure, so that we get a good, clear picture of how much we need to have here, not let you pick up on the, the extra work that you're doing. Is that a fair statement?
You're exactly right, Commissioner Hogan. Ms. Stewart is here way too much. Way too much. So we are now back to the original motion that's been duly seconded. Commissioner Stubblefield, you have a question, comment?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Dozier. I used a lot of time with him the other day on the phone. And I appreciate everything you said. I do agree with you that this is gonna take a lot of work. I don't have an issue with that, I have an issue with the payer and the new one. But I appreciate everything that you told me, and your time that you took, and the introduction to the workshop.
Absolutely. And one of the things that I mentioned to you on our, on our phone call was, I believe you asked me of, you know, what type of a person do we need in that position? And really, that's a decision that, you know, if it was passed, that, that you guys have to make the decision on. But again, given it, what, with what's at stake, the accuracy of IRS reporting for the county, as well as the employees of the county, you just have to ask yourself the question, is what caliber of a person do we want managing the system? That's really what, what it comes down to. So I can't specifically answer, do you need a college graduate? Do you not need one? Do they have to have an accounting degree? Really, it falls on y'all to, you know, what's the caliber of person that you want managing the system?
Other questions? Question has been called for. If you're in favor... Mr. Couch, you, you seconded the first, the first resolution?
I did.
If you'll second that again? Thank you. Motion has been made and duly seconded. This is the original resolution. Commissioner Hogan.
Do you have the original resolution repeated, or is it a motion?
It's a motion.
Okay.
Resolution, resolution has been, has been read and put in form of a motion. Are we all ready to vote?
Was it just on this vote?
No, no. Her, we all, this is, this is the original motion. Are we ready to vote? Question's been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There being 16 votes in favor, five opposed, and three absent, I declare that resolution approved. Recognize now Commissioner Dugger for approve offer on delinquent tax property.
Mayor Bradley, Madam Clerk, fellow commissioners, members of the audience, I'm here on behalf of the Delinquents Tax Committee to move to approve Resolution 0316150210.
Have a motion, and is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farmer. Commissioner Dugger, you have the floor.
This property came before the Delinquents Tax Committee was approved, three to zero with two absent. What it is, it's a parcel of property that's in, within the city limits of Springfield, and it's been delinquent in tax, well, the county's owned it for quite a few years, but because it is jointly owned by the county and the city, the county, the city has already passed this, and therefore it was up to the county to approve it also. It's 0.18 acres of, the county taxes, back taxes, I'm sorry, are about $3,000. The, what this is, is it was a piece, little petty skinny piece of property that it once had a house on it, and at some point the house was torn down, so it's just a property. It's not a big enough lot now to build a house on according to the Springfield codes. So the adjacent property owner made the proposal to the City of Springfield that he would, if they would just release the taxes and the liens on it, and for no money exchange, and he would pick up the tab for having it resurveyed out, and he could survey enough off of his adjacent lot to build a, to make it a buildable lot. Okay, the City of Springfield approved that back in November, so it came up to the county, and it's owed about $3,000 on it in back taxes. The majority of the, of the financial burden was on the City of Springfield, because at the time, because they put liens on it for keeping it up and stuff. And so we passed that we would forgive that 3,000-plus in taxes. The buyer would be responsible for 2013 and 2014 taxes. Generally, when these properties come up, if the tax burden, if the bid on it exceeds the tax burden, it does not have to come to the commission. Since this one does not, it has to have a vote of the full commission to do it. And anybody have any questions on it?
Any questions for Commissioner Dugger? Commissioner Hogan?
Where'd you get the $3,000? $306.67 is what I'm sent on the resolution.
It's, but that does not...
Per year?
No, it's a very small, that, I believe that is what's owed on it for, maybe for the 13 and 14. The 3,000 came because this property has been owed on it for, it came, it was in the Delinquents Tax Committee packet.
I didn't see the whole resolution, I see $3,000.
Yeah, that, I don't know where that...
Other question, comments?
It was several. And this will go out for, for a bid. I mean, it'll be advertised in the paper, and it'll go for bids, so...
Commissioner Haley.
To Commissioner Hogan's point, I think if you look in the third, second paragraph up there, the last sentence, he will assume 2013, 2014, and 2015. So maybe that's where the difference is made up. Mark will play that.
This is all the back taxes owed on it, Ms. Troggen. It was in, it was in the packet for the Delinquents Tax Committee, so...
Ready to vote?
Questions?
Questions have been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. 21 votes in favor, none opposed, and three absent, I declare that resolution approved. Thank you, Commissioner Dugger. Any old business to come before the body. Under new business and recognized, Commissioner Adcock for budget amendments, which in your packets are numbers 20 and 21.
Thank you, Mayor Bradley, Madam Clerk, fellow commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. The first resolution is 031615022. It's a balanced budget amendment, and I make a motion we approve.
Have a motion, is there a second? And a second by Commissioner Couch. Any discussion? Ready to vote? No objection to question being put. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time.
I got a quick question.
Commissioner Eden.
Oh, it's not in the packet.
No, this, these resolutions were approved by the Budget Committee tonight.
Oh, tonight, okay.
That's why it's under new business.
Commissioner Moore, are you still voting?
We're trying.
You might have a bad battery there.
I'm gonna take a little while.
Is he the mechanic?
I'm the mechanic. I got it in there.
Okay. Jay, you're a genius.
Being 21 votes in favor, none opposed, and three absent, I declare that resolution approved. Commissioner Adcock.
This is Resolution 031615023. It's also a balanced budget amendment, and I make a motion we approve.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
I'd like to, I'd like to explain.
Commissioner Adcock, okay?
This is just voted on, we brought this through Building and Grounds. This is for the work that we're gonna do with Train. And we were talking about hiring an employee to work with Train, to watch, you know, kinda what they were doing, and give us reports. And it was brought to our attention that they gotta get into every, pretty much, room in these buildings. And so we, Building and Grounds proposed that we pay Joe's employees a premium for working night shifts, and I think he said today they'd be working from 4:00 in the afternoon to 2:00 in the morning on a lot of these occasions, and we'll be giving them some extra pay for coming in and working nights. All the work will not be done at night, so they, I think they calculated this on the number of hours they would be working till July 1st. It could be a little less than that, but it's a balanced budget amendment. That money comes out of the affordable, that, the money from Train, where energy saving, energy efficiency. So I just wanted to explain that to everybody, so they know what we're talking about.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Any questions? Question's been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There being 21 votes in favor, none opposed, and three absent, I declare that resolution approved. Anything else under new business? Commissioner Vogel.
This is not a debate, I'd just like to say as the, as the county commissioner in this body, that send my condolences to Mr. Carl Swan and his family, who lost his wife. Mr. Carl and his wife was a fixture in his courtroom for over 20 years. She was here every night with him, and I'd just like to bring that...
Thank you, Commissioner Vogel. I appreciate that. Anything else? I'm gonna recognize Commissioner Dugger.
The special call meeting we had that was canceled due to the snow, has that been rescheduled?
March 31st. March 31st at 6:00.
That's that one?
Yes, yeah. I was gonna bring that up again. March 31st at 6:00 will be the working session with the Board of Education. I'm gonna recognize now Commissioner Bowens for the election of notaries.
Mayor Bradley, I make a motion that we approve an order from Robson County, the State of Tennessee.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hogan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So they are approved, a motion to adjourns and all.
A move.
I have that by Commissioner Adcock, and second by Commissioner Hogan. All those in favor. We stand adjourned.
Hey, can get Joe to replace the one?